...a meeting, regular planning commission meeting for October 17, nineteen, two thousand and seventeen. Can we take roll?
Chairperson Jim Sawtell, vice chairperson Bob Momarch.
Here.
Commissioner Phyllis Arden here, Bob McCool.
Here.
Jerry Melia.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Here.
Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Woody. Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Hillary Graham.
Here.
Well, it does not appear that we have any people for public comment. You're both applicants, correct? So I think we can just go ahead and open the hearing on the adoption of a resolution. We have proof of publication?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Either of you want to make a statement or presentation?
Good evening. Bill Jenks with RC Superior. We're here presenting this replat for the area that Stephen has brought up here. Stephen's got a really thorough and wonderful presentation for you, so I'm not going to go into any detail, but just want to let you know we're here for questions on this or anything else you want to talk about on updates for the center. And that's it.
I guess that means I get to take over.
Yes, can we hear from the staff?
Stephen, my town staff. Tonight's agenda item four concerns two replats to accommodate a handful of changes to the street and parcel configuration within primarily Planning Area Three of the Town Center, which is also known now as Downtown Superior. This map illustrates the boundaries. Well, it illustrates where Superior Town Center is within Superior, and it also illustrates the boundaries of the two plats here in red. Okay. There we go. The bulk of the updates proposed through these replats stem from adjustments to the layouts of the streets within Planning Area Three, which is south of Old Railway, and these were approved primarily through the PD three update in two thousand and sixteen. This land use map in the top left corner is from the Plan Development Number Two, and the one in the bottom right is from PDA Number Three. PDA Three approved the addition of two public streets shown in gray there on the bottom right. They're south of Discovery Parkway, and they also approved, so the north-south street was Street Nine, and the east-west street, Street Ten, and then, which will probably be an extension of Discovery Parkway, Street Eleven was also approved. But the two streets that we're mostly focused on tonight are Streets Nine and Ten, and the subject of the change is because of this approval of these two streets, Street Five, as it was originally plotted, shifted ten feet to the south in order to accommodate that turn and line up. Street Ten was Street Five. So that's kind of shown a little bit closer here. This is PDA Three again in closer view. PDA Three also approved the replacement of diagonal parking, which was originally designed for Discovery, or, sorry, Village Green Way. So the north side of Village Green Way had Discovery Parking or diagonal parking. That has been eliminated and replaced with parallel parking. So the plat essentially had happened before the PD three update, and so we have to go back and replat this area in order to align with the PD three approval. Both application materials and staff's memo detail each and every update and adjustment proposed, the updates that relate to the streets and blocks around Village Green are confined to the area highlighted. In short, the parcels immediately northwest of Street Five, so these parcels on the north side of this street all enlarged in size, and the parcels to the southeast were reduced in size in order to accommodate the shifting location of Street Five. As clarified in staff memo and in Exhibit B of the application, the overall acreage shift between the streets, developable lots, and tracks dedicated to parks and open space is minimal, totaling only point one-three acres, with developable acreage being reduced by this amount and open space and public rights away areas increasing. In addition to a project narrative in the two replats, this application, the application materials included two exhibits to help clarify the changes proposed. The map included in Exhibit A illustrates both the existing and proposed lot configuration and acreages, as well as the areas and geometries anticipated at the time of PDA Number Three. This map does not illustrate the entirety of both plats, but rather focuses on the areas of the changes that were proposed. In addition to the two core changes proposed around Village Green Park that we've already mentioned, this application also proposes two minor boundary line adjustment, one between Lot One, Block One of Discovery Office Park and the adjacent property here, which is Super Lot A within Block Twenty-Five of the Town Center. And the other adjustment is here between Super Lot Four A and Super Lot Four B. This line here used to be the dividing line between those parcels, and what's proposed is the north-south line here to kind of confine the development to Block Twenty-Six over here and a future development within Four B to the east. So those vacations or those boundary line adjustments are kind of shown with the stars. This area within Track D One also has several vacation requests that are kind of cleanup items, and we'll get into those, the detail of that here in a second. A closer look at Exhibit B helps clarify the extent of the changes proposed, as well as the number of parcels that are actually unaffected by this proposal. The highlighted lines show where actual changes are being made. The ones that aren't highlighted show zeros. So we are doing comprehensive replats for both plats, which in turn yields a lot of parcels that aren't actually affected by this proposal. So seventeen of the seventeen developable blocks and two tracks are actually impacted by the adjustments proposed, with most of the updates involving less than a tenth of an acre of land. The biggest exchange being almost, just over two-thirds of an acre, being exchanged between Super Lots Four A and Four B. So we'll quickly go through each plat sheet and kind of highlight the changes that are proposed. Replat Three, shown here, includes fifty-two and a half acres of land. The cover sheet includes all the required certification blocks, the dedication language, vacation statements, as well as the land use table to track the changes proposed relative to replat Number Three. As alluded to on the previous slide, several parcels listed here aren't being adjusted at all. On Plant Sheet Two of this replat, it encompasses the northwest segment of the plat. The only change reflected on this plat concerns the boundary line adjustment that we just mentioned. So essentially, this area here is being adjusted, and the reason for that request is we have a development application coming in within Lot One, Block One of Discovery Office Park for twenty-two residential units, and in order for all of them to meet their required setback, this adjustment, which mattered to be about, I think it was three feet, needed to be made so that they weren't requesting an exception to the setback requirements within the Discovery Office Park PD. The Ranch Capital folks weren't planning on using this as a developable area, so they had no issue agreeing to that, that exchange, which amounted to three thousandths of an acre being exchanged between the two parcels. And it's highlighted a little bit more there. So there's a little bit of ripple effect kind of in every little change that we're kind of seeing. There's an easement that's shown a little bit more lightly here, and that's also being vacated. So instead of having this public access easement extend over into a lot that it wasn't intended for, in addition to the boundary line adjustment, we're processing a minor vacation here in order for that public access easement not to impact Block Twenty-Five. So this is Plat Sheet Three. No changes are proposed through this plat. There is a detail for that vacation easement shown on this page. That's Detail B. For Sheet Four, this actually encompasses the southeastern segment of the plat where the bulk of the parcel adjustments are reflected to accommodate the new alignment of Central Parkway, which is also being named through this plat here. It's actually being named by the other plat because it's within the other plat, but to accommodate this shift, we had to vacate or dedicate, I guess is a better way to put it, a portion of Super Lot Four B to the area that's now planned for right-of-way. So these slight pushes and pulls changed everything that's kind of adjacent to all these lots. There's also one foot of right-of-way that's being dedicated from Super Lot Four A to Discovery Office Park to accommodate the right-of-way width change in that location. So this is Sheet Five, which just includes all the line and curve tables associated with the plat, as well as Detail C, which clarifies the two other vacations proposed. And unfortunately, it's not terribly clear, but there's a one-foot by eight-foot utility easement that's part of that, that would have been within the right-of-way now that this area is being dedicated as right-of-way, so that's getting cleaned up and vacated. And then we're vacating forty-one square feet of right-of-way so that this kind of corner lines up more consistently with the corner of where Village Green Way tees into Discovery Office Park, or Discovery Parkway, excuse me. For Replat Five, it's shown here. It also is about fifty-two acres in size, and it covers, the cover sheet includes the requirements that we mentioned previously, the certification blocks, the dedication language, vacation statements, as well as an updated land use table to track the changes. Like Replat Three, several parcels within, this plat are also not being changed through this update, but more of the bulk of the changes are actually born on this plat. So Plat Sheet Two encompasses the northwestern segment of the plat, and this plan sheet reflects the changes that will be made to Track D One, Block Fifteen, and portions of Block Seventeen and Track D, as well as the adjacent streets. So again, Central Parkway, so this was Street Five. It's being named Central Parkway. Central Park is planned for Track D One, and this shift in right-of-way creates a dedication where the right-of-way was previously plotted here, so our public park will eventually be a little bit bigger because of this dedication. Lot Fifteen will increase in size, as will Track E, while Block Fifteen here to the south will become a little bit smaller. Village Green right-of-way is also narrowing. We went up from a sixty-foot right-of-way there to a fifty-six-foot right-of-way, and we're eliminating the diagonal parking on the north side of that street. So the street name changes. We didn't used to have this section of right-of-way named, nor Street Five, and we hadn't formally named the extensions of Promenade Drive, so Promenade splits at, this is Village Green Park, Track D. We'll have Promenade Drive on the north side and on the south side, and then on this sheet, it reconverges, if that's a word, converges, I guess, again, on the south side of the park, and Promenade Drive will extend into the southern part of Planning Area Three. So the last one being named here is Josephine Way. That's Street Six. But again, the change is kind of summarized here. You can faintly see the yellow lines of the former, they're shown on this plat, the former lines of the previous plat, so how everything's kind of widening. In addition to the kind of the push-pull changes to the northwest and southeast, Discovery Off, not Discovery, excuse me, Promenade Drive is actually getting a little bit wider in these two segments too, and that's not coming from Village Green Park. It's coming from both of these two parcels. So they're going to decrease a little bit in this direction, but gain acreage overall because of the north-south kind of changes. So Sheet Four does not have any changes to it. It's within, so what's reflected elsewhere, Super Lot Five and Lot Twenty-four have no changes at all in geometry, and that, the balance of those two lots are shown here, Super Lot Five and Track H. Track H, sorry, I guess is the other lot, other parcel that's not changed in configuration So there's no change to the, the other little bit, there's no change to the north-south alignment of Track D. Sorry, that was one thing I forgot. So this too includes all the curve and line tables associated with the plat, and then it also clarifies, the big thing here is this vacation exhibit layout, so it was handled a little differently than the last plat. They decided to show all their vacations in this, in this layout here. This first vacation, Vacation A, is a drainage easement. This one and this little triangle shown here, I think that's Vacation B, date back to the first plat we had for the Town Center, which perhaps Lisa may be the only one that's familiar with, but it was the one that the town actually kind of created for the area, I think, you know, when we were trying to find a developer to, you know, take this project on, and the thought was that this was going to be a private parcel, so this access easement was in order to ensure access to the cemetery. This area is now within Track D, and it's just not necessary. And then this was a drainage easement that also encumbers a portion of the current parking lot to the south of the sports stable, so that'll have to be vacated through a separate instrument because it's not part of this proposal. But the remaining piece that's within Track D One is getting vacated here as well. There's a utility easement that also extends through Track D One that was part of an original design that's no longer being used. It was for a storm main. And then essentially, these vacations here, there's two sidewalk easements because they thought that the corners of the sidewalk would actually extend into the private parcels, but because of the shifts in the right-of-way, that's not necessary here. And then there were eight-foot easements adjacent to the northeast boundaries of Tracks E and Lot Blocks Fourteen and Fifteen, and because those are shifting, they're being vacated and rededicated. So we'll still have eight-foot utility easements on each side of these blocks. They just need to be in new locations because of the geometry of those lots have changed. And then this is the same detail that's actually included in the other plat. It just kind of helps illustrate the coordination of the two plats in this location because they affect an intersection that spans both of the plats. So that's the quick overview. Staff is recommending approval of this application per the conditions outlined here. The one is the technical corrections, which we always include, and we have a couple little outstanding things that'll probably still need to be addressed before it goes to the board and perhaps even after the board through technical corrections. And the last one is just the order, so it's a little confusing, but because we wanted Replat Three to reflect the proposed street names, Replat Five needs to be recorded first. So that's all that's clarifying is that we don't want to have two plats reflected or recorded at the same time that are inconsistent in their street names, so if Replat Five, because it's naming the streets, has to get recorded first, and then Replat Three can be recorded and reflect the appropriate street names. A lot of stuff that typically you guys don't get to see, but really, as I was explaining to Commissioner Momarch before the meeting, it's the vacation and the rededication of right-of-way that has to go through a public process, and so it's all thrown at you at once.
That's it for me? Any questions? Many, Commissioner?
Yeah, I have just one, one question on Village Green Way, reducing the width of that and removing the diagonal parking and going to parallel parking. What would be the impact of the number of spots?
That's a good question, and I didn't look at it. I mean, this is something that we reviewed and was approved when we did the PD three update, so this is more of a cleanup item, but it is something I can look at and have prepared for the board. I mean, typically, I mean, I don't know if Jim has a guess.
Jim Brastovich, Civil Resources. I don't have an exact count, but when we got rid of the diagonal parking on the south side of the road, we went to a parallel parking on both sides of the road, so there wasn't much of a net loss or gain.
Oh, that's a good point.
Any other questions?
Just a kudos to you for keeping all of that straight.
Yeah.
Because that's a lot, and so, and, yeah, and I just philosophically, I like that you guys are tweaking and refining and taking this forward and continually looking for ways to make this better, so I appreciate that. Refresh my memory, do we have an FDP for Track E?
For Track E, yes.
Does that need to get updated, or are we good?
No, the, I mean, it just gets, I mean, Track D is really not, it's actually increasing in size.
Right.
So there'll just be a little bit more.
Be more green area in the middle.
Acres to play with, yeah.
Okay.
But we do need to, we'll follow with an administrative update to that FDP that was already approved in order to have it match the alignments here, but.
So several weeks ago, we saw a flyover of this, a lot of this area and a lot of the tracks here. Is any of that walkway or path that we saw in that flyover included in this replat?
For Track H, is that the flyover you're talking about? I think that was the most recent flyover I recall you guys seen. That's further to the south. So the replat does not change any acreage within Track H. So Track H is further to the south?
Yes.
So really, this replat is to kind of, I mean, we, the developer knew that this street was planned, and now they have designed that, so they know exactly where they want to tie in, and they know that, you know, this, which was Street Five, needs to shift ten and a half feet to the southeast in order for the alignment to work, and this, all these turning radiuses to work, it's kind of an awkward-shaped parcel, so it took some engineering and figuring out. But now that we know exactly how that's going to work, like, if you look at this sheet, it kind of clarifies that they estimated PD, at PDA Three, for these lots all increased in size by a certain amount, but those numbers are even different now because they've dialed it in completely.
Okay, so no impact of?
No impact of Track H at all, yeah. It is included in this proposal theoretically, but that's only so that I can keep track of all of the plats that go here. I don't want any more small pieces of plats.
You keep track of all the tracks?
Keep track of all of the plats, really, so we've had, so instead of having, you know, a plat that affects this piece and maybe a plat between these two parcels, we still will effectively have one plat for the Discovery Office Park, Superior Town Center plat, and we'll have, on the west side of this development, and we'll have one to the east, which is filing One B. So filing our Replat Three totally replaces Replat Two, and Replat Five totally replaces Replat Four.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I have one. How many street names have been changed? Central Parkway is a new street name.
So we had placeholders theoretically, but, yeah, so if you count the ones that have happened, net new is really just Central Parkway being named and Josephine Way being named. Those are the two new ones. Promenade Drive was always expected to continue. It just hadn't been formally named around this area. And then Superior Drive was, they're proposing to have Superior Drive be a continuation over here. So rather than have a net new name of a street, although there is a slight jog, Superior Drive will continue on the north side of Block Seventeen.
When will the rest of the streets be named? Do you know?
When will what? The rest of them? When they're plotted? I mean, I don't know that, and Bill can speak to this more, but my understanding is that they're working on deals specifically for this area. I have all the applications just waiting for me to get through them. And then, you know, once we actually have somebody in play for these, we'll come back and make sure that the, you know, all of that works, but I don't know that that's designed to change all that much at this point, but it hasn't been plotted yet. So that's still, so where this looks a little different is this is all Super Lot Five, and this area here is Super Lot Four A, and this area here is Super Lot Four B. We'll see Super Lot Four B with an application in the next couple months for what we saw at the concept plan from Remington and Thrive Homes. Thrive Homes is on Block Fourteen and a portion of Block Twenty-Six, and so Block Twenty-Six doesn't exist yet until they plaid it, plaid these streets, and then Remington's on the other piece of Block Twenty-Six on the north, immediately north and south of the proposed streets. And then when we do plaid those, we'll also have to name Streets Nine and Ten because those are just placeholders as well. But that's not being done right now.
Okay.
Anything else?
So I have kind of an aside. Are any of these proposed streets going to tie in with existing streets?
I'm not sure if I, I mean, Promenade Drive will continue to extend, and these streets, like Central Parkway, will tie into Superior Drive, and Promenade ties into Village Green Way, which is existing.
Okay, not, not exactly what I'm talking about. I'm talking.
Further outside of the development?
Exactly.
Promenade Drive may be the one extends, I mean, that's to be determined, I guess is the best way to put that, but Promenade Drive may be the one that extends south if there's an approval for a connection to Rock Creek to the south around Eighty-Eighth Street.
This plat doesn't preclude kind of either, either way it still could go, right?
Correct. I mean, it doesn't pre-determine anything, and it doesn't prohibit it either, so.
Anything else, Commissioners? Gentlemen, do you have any passing thoughts or comments before we try to wrap this up?
Just quickly, as always, we appreciate your time and help getting through this. I know this is not the most interesting thing to be reviewing and approving tonight, so we'll do our best to bring some more, some more interesting material back to you in the near future. Like Stephen was talking about, we do have a lot in the works for Blocks Fourteen, Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six, and Twenty-Seven, and hope to bring more soon, so, thank you.
Thank you. And then, Commissioner, thanks, Mr. Williams, for a good job of putting everything together. There's a lot of information. Excuse me. Does anybody want to try to tackle this motion? Oh, I'm sorry. We'll close a public hearing at this time. I thought we did the motion.
I do. I can give it a shot.
Okay.
Let's see, the Planning Commission recommending, Resolution of Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of the re-subdivision of land for Discovery Office Park slash Superior Town Center, Replat Number Three, and Superior Town Center filing One B, Replat Number Five with exceptions, I put as noted, or as, or should I read those?
Conditions as proposed by staff.
Oh, yeah, conditions, yeah, with conditions A and B, as noted.
And that's Resolution PC Four?
Yeah, Resolution PC dash four.
Second.
We have a second? We have a second? Let me take a vote, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Any, any other business we want to take up at this time?
Couple questions for staff.
Sure, let's do it. We're all here, might as well try to cover some ground if it needs it.
All right. The tear down of the parks or the building across the way, can you give us an update? People are asking me why, what for, when, why. The other half of that is it'd be really nice, you know, just knowing that as commissioners so that when residents ask us what had just happened, we can, I can say something other than "I don't know, I didn't even realize it came down," until you say something.
I can definitely respond to the first part of it. I wasn't really aware it was going down until I showed up and saw that in the parking lot as well last Friday, I think demolition occurred, if I remember correctly. But yeah, that building was never meant to be permanent. It was a, you know, it's a trailer, so the decision was made, and I don't know at what level, but we just needed to remove it. And so it was removed. And I don't know what the plan is. I don't think there really is any. I think they'll maybe use it for parking as needed, and then I'll revisit what it can be used for. The trailer certainly had lasted and was used much longer than it was originally intended, so.
Okay, just curious. And are there any, I know I made a request just if building permits were pulled or anything else that's kind of going on around town?
I haven't got an update recently. I don't, I'm not aware of anything with an original town.
Nothing on the multifamily lots going on? They have a?
No. I think that they pulled their.
They need a demo permit?
I think they have their demo permit, but they haven't acted on it. That's my understanding, but.
Was there asbestos involved in that? Do you know?
I don't know. But if there was, they have to go through the state, as I understand it, to do all the mediation or whatever, so.
Okay.
And generally, if that home is as old as it is, there is asbestos involved, yeah.
Yeah.
Any idea of upcoming schedule and meetings? Just curious.
We are supposed to come forward with Ethan Allen on the first meeting in November, so hopefully that stays on track, but I need a recent middle by Friday, so. So, yeah, we'll see. And I don't know after that, but we have our community meetings, as a reminder, next week for anyone that wants to attend. The Tuesday night one at 6:30 is at the Indiana Street, the fire station off Indiana Street, and the Wednesday night one is here. The business community meeting is lunch on Wednesday, and I think that's 12 to 1:30, so. Has everyone seen the, and we're distributing, the flyers on that have kind of already started to go out, and we'll be putting up, we've ordered signs to be posted kind of around town, just like the yard signs that we've used in the past to notify other meetings, and those should be installed this week, so.
Phyllis, do we need to take up the signature issue, or do we need to do that afterwards?
We can do it afterwards, I think, yeah. The only other update, I think a few of you were talking about it before the meeting, was that the lights on Main Street are lit, so we have our, really a neat light fixture within the downtown Superior area, and they're, they should be up on all of Superior Drive as well soon. And then Main Street is supposed to be open at some point next week, so that will be nice to have that open. So there'll be some signs of directing that traffic as to actually use the roundabout and not use the, and Main Street and not use the construction access road anymore, so, for traditional traffic. Hopefully, construction traffic still uses that road.
Do you have any idea what was going on today? I know I came home, and it was really backed up, trying to get through the circle. Do they have it down to one, one lane, or?
They did have one lane reduced. I didn't go through it today myself, and I think that they were putting in the sidewalk on the west side of, that's what I understood to be happening, but.
Busier than I've seen it.
It's close, from what I understand, so.
Are you good? I got a question for that Northwest Superior meeting on next Tuesday. So who's hosting that? Is that Clarion who's running that?
Clarion will be running the meeting, and I will be attending.
You'll be attending?
Yeah.
What if several of us attend that meeting? Is there an issue with us?
This is your outreach as well, so, you know, there's no issue with you attending the meeting.
Or maybe from Hillary, if there's more than, yeah, if there's more than four of us together, or three of us together or something?
Three.
Three?
We've noticed the meetings, we can notice them differently. I mean, they're noticed kind of already, but we can put a notice out on the, in the, to kind of check that last box, so.
That'd be very good.
Okay, I will make sure I do that. Do you, do we know who's attending? I know that Commissioner Ritchie is not able to attend.
Yeah, I plan to be.
Okay.
I plan to attend.
Okay.
I'm going to try also. Anything else? Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.